All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting of April 21st, 2021. I'm David Collingwood, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I'm joined by fellow supervisors, Mr. Jim Miller, Vice Chair, and member, Mr. Jay Kaiser. I'll call tonight's meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded. At its conclusion, Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. A link to the meeting can be found on the township's website at www.westrockhilltownship.org. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be following the West Rock Hill Township policies for public meetings and the rules that apply as listed on page two of the meeting agenda. With that said, are there any public comments on the agenda items as listed? If so, please state your name and address. Fine, we'll move on to the announcements. The first announcement, we will have an executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss legal and real estate matters. And now it's my distinct pleasure to present Resolution 2021-03, a resolution of the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors recognizing and honoring retiring Penridge Regional Police Department Chief Rodney Blake. Whereat you. The welfare and strength of a community depends on the dedication, commitment, and efforts of not only its residents, employees, and elected officials, but upon those who have changed, who have been charged with protecting and serving the community as well. And it is the intent of the Board of Supervisors of West Rock Hill Township to acknowledge and give special recognition to those who serve this community. And whereas Chief Blake began his career in May of 1988 under the direction of former Chief Frederick Cream of West Rock Hill Police Department. And then in 1992, when West Rock Hill Township merged with East Rock Hill Township and Salafal Borough to form the Penridge Regional Police Department. Whereas Chief Blake has tirelessly dedicated over 30 years of law enforcement service as the longest tenured officer in the Penridge Regional Police Department. It has been involved in the hiring process of every current PRPD employee. Whereas Chief Blake has served as a field training officer, a firearms instructor, a sergeant, and police of chief, police of chief, chief of police, and has diligently served as a dedicated and compassionate leader in his office in the PRPD and is a well-respected police chief through Bucks County. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 21st day of April 2021 that the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize, acknowledge, and extend its heartfelt appreciation to Chief Rodney Blake for his many contributions to West Rock Hill Township and his residence over the years, and offers best wishes for continued success upon his well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your service, Chief.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I just want to mention that, you know, when I was 19 years old, I just graduated from the police academy and I interviewed with Chief Cream. He says, "How old are you?" I said, "I'm 19, sir." He goes, "Well, when do you turn 20?" I said, "In the next week." He goes, "Stop back and see me." So I stopped back and seen him and he said, "What are you doing here?" I said, "Remember, you said to stop back and see." He goes, "Okay, I'll hire you." And when my career began in West Rock Hill Township, you know, I just remember the leadership of the board at the time was, Doc Durstein was the chairman and John Mann and Vernon Markley. And, you know, I just appreciated their leadership and guidance through all those, all those years. And, you know, as the board changed, I, you know, just respected and learned from, you know, these men in leadership and, you know, each one had a unique leadership style. And, you know, I'm just thankful, thankful Doc took me under his wing and taught me different things. And, you know, I just really appreciated that. And, you know, I appreciated being an employee of West Rock Hill Township and then Penridge Regional Police Department. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hey, Rod, this is Jay. I'd just like to say to you, career well done. Thank you for all your service to us and the community.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that.
And I'll just add to that, congratulations, Chief. You'll be missed. Everybody will remember all your time here and all the hard work you did for the township and the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
Okay, moving on to the agenda items. The consent agenda was made up of the March 17th, 2021, 2021 meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, escrow, release and vouchers, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, and treasury report payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the treasurer's report for March 31st, 2021. The general fund, $751,096.52. Highway aid, $260,000, $812.99. Open space, $1,059,776.98. The park fund, $30,016.67. Equipment fund, $19,029.95. $129.57. Street light, $32,973.15. The reserve fund, general fund reserve, $396,022.36. Open space, Manderfield, $51,377.48. The sewage maintenance fund, $180,908.69. Stormwater fund, $7,316.56. And the escrow funds, $2,435,074.11.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve it, subject to audit.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed?
Aye.
The agenda motion is approved. I will now move on to confirmed appointments. We should have Mr. Cliff Cole tonight. James Park rental request. Mr. Cole, if you're present, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I can't help myself into, before I start, to congratulate Chief Rodney. I really appreciate your service and I'm just very happy for you and I hope you have a long and happy retirement.
Thank you, Cliff. I appreciate that.
Um, thank you very much to the supervisors for granting our, my confirmed appointment. I'm representing a group who we call the Citizens for Clean Air. And this group is Christine and Todd Shelley, Kathy and Brian Warbach, and Pamela West and Cliff Cole. We are a couple. So we would like to have a family picnic. You know, we're calling it the Citizens for Clean Air Family Picnic. On June 5th, at the wonderful James Park, James Memorial Park. And we have put in a request to reserve it from 12 to 5. Our event, proposed event will go from 1 to 4 so that we have time to set up and clean up. So my specific question to the, to the board, I guess I have a lead up. Is it, according to the rules and regulations for the James Memorial Park application, section three, item 12, we need permission from the supervisors to hold our event at the park. We would like to ask permission from the West Rock Hill Supervisors to host a public family picnic event where there will be music and networking. The event will highlight the importance of keeping our air clean in West Rock Hill Township. And personally, I can't think of a better place to do it than James Memorial Park, which is a very beautiful location and probably among the best in, in West Rock Hill. We will take steps to make sure proper social distancing protocols are practiced. And we will invite organizations who have supported our efforts to stop the Quaker Town Compressor Station. We expect to have no more than 100 people in attendance at a time, but we have to admit that it's very difficult for us to predict the exact numbers that we will have. You know, we hope that we get a very good turnout. And before I ask my question, just so everybody knows, I'm going to read the section that I was talking about. What did I say? Section three, item 12, which states that if we need permission to hold any public meeting or rally with more than five persons or engaged in any marching or driving as members of a military, political, or other organization without permission of the Board of Supervisors, which requires a statement of information including the name of the organization, its purpose, numbers of purpose, persons expected to attend, and the expected duration and name of the persons in charge. The other thing I'd like to mention is that we did talk to Steve, and I'm sorry, Steve, I forget your last name, who was involved in the baseball. When we were, when Christine and I were over there checking out the park, we ran into Steve and he was working on the fields. And we have made a request that they don't, they have, don't have a baseball game in that particular time. And he told us that if we told that to Greg, which I did, that that might be possible. We're not saying that we can't have a game, but we're just worried about what might happen if there are too many people, you know, too many cars and whatnot. So the question we have is will the West Rock Hill Supervisor approve such event? And we would welcome you and your families to attend this event.
Cliff, I'll ask a question. From what it sounds like, you will have enough parking. Do you agree that you will have enough parking for the event?
Oh, yes. First off, there's a very, I mean, as you're aware, there's a very large parking lot, which I don't know what, I mean, when you have events like the fishing derby and whatnot, I imagine you have a lot of people. But it also seems like there's a, there's a overflow parking lot around the middle of the park, you know, that's over towards the lake. So we think there's plenty of parking. The other thing is we don't anticipate having a mass of people at the same time. We, we, you know, we will have a, you know, there will be a high time of sorts. You know, there'll be a time where there'll be more people than others, but we expect people to kind of come and go. That's the, that's the way the event is going to be structured.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cole, David Collingwood, I have a couple of questions. Will you be charging money for attendance?
No, we will not be.
And I guess I would talk to possibly Mr. Lippincott and you at the same time. What about the sanitary facilities? You're saying that you're expecting 100, it may be 110, but it could be even more. You're not exactly sure how many people are going to attend. Are the sanitary facilities sufficient or will they be enhanced prior to your family picnic?
We haven't made any plans in that area. I, what can you tell me? I mean, I'm just, I'm answering a question with a question, but what do you do for the fishing derby?
Well, what we probably would do is if you planning on having a lot of people and you think the bathroom facilities will be used heavily, there's sometimes that we do an extra cleaning just to ensure that it's, it's up to standards. We usually try to get it cleaned every Thursday, but we may have to get it cleaned extra or add an extra restroom.
We would be very happy to contribute or pay for that extra service so that the township doesn't have to incur the cost of that. But I think that would be a good idea. Is that something I can work offline with, with Greg?
I would think so.
But so my answer will be that, you know, within limits, we will do whatever is necessary in that area, you know, that you require us to do.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
You may.
Thanks. Mr. Cole, will you be preparing any food on the premises?
No, that's not our plan because of COVID. That's just not really possible. You know, we thought about that. So what we're going to suggest is that people, you know, it's a picnic. They bring their own food. You know, and we, you know, we, with COVID, I just don't think that's reasonable to think. But if, actually, what I was going to suggest is if the, if the baseball concession folks would like to be open during our event, we would certainly be happy for them to collect revenue from, from that. But I don't know how that works and I'm.
Thank you.
Yep.
David Collingwood again. Talk to me about your plans for security, police presence, traffic control.
Um, you know, I haven't, we did talk about traffic control and that we might be able to try to find some people within our group to help with that. If, I'd be very, very happy to talk to the police force about what they might suggest. But, you know, we weren't sure if this was going to get approved, so I have not gone down that road. But we are absolutely, you know, amenable to, you know, to anything that the police force would suggest that we do. Again, if I'm at the risk of answering a question with a question, what is normally done for something like the fishing derby? Or for a well, very well-attended baseball game?
Could I speak, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Yep.
Yeah, I already have it on the agenda for me to discuss with the new chief to assign an officer there. I already looked at the schedule and we plan on having a bike officer assigned to the event.
Okay, well, if, if, would it be possible for us to be able to request to have an officer present for, and if there was a cost associated with that, our group can work with you on that.
Nope, it's already done. It's on our agenda for myself and the new chief to discuss. And there'll be an officer there. Yep, you know, it's already requested.
Okay, well, thank you. I really, really appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay. Mr. Cole, this is Jay Kaiser. I wanted to just go over again with you. I know we rent the pavilion out to picnics and parties and stuff like this. However, they, I want to make sure that this is clear. The Little League has precedence on the field and I believe that their schedule probably already is made. So from my perspective, that needs to be looked at before you would schedule an event like this. Because if there is a game already scheduled, I think that, you know, the Little League should be talked to or have their approval of either changing it or, or something. Because I know if you have a game going on and you want to have an event, it sometimes gets a little bit congested over there.
Um, well, thank you for bringing that up and I agree, we're very sensitive to that. When we were there, we did talk to a member of the, of the Little League who was working on the field. His name is Steve. And perhaps Greg can help me because I mentioned it to Greg when I talked to him about it. But they apparently had a planning meeting shortly after I talked to him. So I don't know what the schedule is, but the unpredictability can come in with rain dates and whatnot. And we don't need the Little League to completely block out that date just for a few hours, you know, from, from 1 to 4 on that one date. There'd be no reason why they couldn't have an evening game or why they couldn't have morning games. So we're only talking about blocking out for four hours in the park.
Okay, thank you.
David Collingwood here. I have a few more questions. Will your activities remain in the park and not enter any public roads?
Oh, yes, that would be our intent, would be just to be completely primarily under the main pavilion or under or around the main pavilion. We, we put the, we put our application in for both pavilions.
I see that.
Just so that, you know, you wouldn't rent it out to somebody else or perhaps we would use it as a side thing or something. But our plan would be to primarily be around the main pavilion.
Two more questions, David Collingwood. What type of activities do you anticipate?
Um, it's mostly, it's a networking event. We will have music. We'll have music for people to listen to. We anticipate having some speakers and, you know, to talk, to talk about clean air. The idea is to get public awareness of, of clean air and the compressor station and, you know, perhaps other environmental issues. But those are our basic, that's where we're coming from, is it's a clean air picnic, celebrating the clean air. But we, one of the ideas that we have, I don't know if we're going to pull this off, but one of the ideas we have is in encourage social distancing is to put a bunch of hula hoops around and around the area of the pavilion and so that families can mark off a place where they can be safe amongst themselves. You know, admittedly, we're still in our planning station, stages, so I can't give you the 100% exact details of what we're going to do. I mean, perhaps we have games for kids or something. But it's mostly, it's, it's music, it's networking, and, and speakers. That's, that's what we have planned. Does that answer your question?
One final question. You say in your application that we will invite organizations. Who are some of the organizations? Can you identify some of the organizations you're going to invite?
Sure, sure. We have an affiliation with the Clean Air Council who has actually attended township meetings. They've sent representatives to the township meetings. In fact, they've been invited to speak and they've been spoke at the, and public comment too. So we have an affiliation with the Clean Air Council and we are also members of the River Keepers Network. There's a connection between the River Keepers and the township in that the solicitor that the River Keepers Network is using to, for an appeal of FERC, is Douglas Blazey, I believe. I'm terrible at names, I'm sorry. But he's also the lawyer that you're using for your, the, the appeal to the DEP. I'm not saying that we will invite him to speak, but I'm just saying that we would have somebody like the, but we might have representation from the River Keepers. We haven't asked anybody yet because we weren't sure that we would be granted this request. I didn't want to presume.
Thank you. And the fact that this is a public park, open to the public, you would do nothing to hinder people from using the park? People want to use the walking trails?
No, in fact, we would encourage it. No, there's no, we plan no gating of anything or, you know, it's anybody that wants to show up to this and, you know, of course, if there's inappropriate behavior, that's, we, we would not want people to act in, in any inappropriate way. You know, this is a celebration about, you know, the environment, clean air, life. So, you know, will it be a big raving party? I don't think so, but we hope that we have a nice, family-oriented atmosphere where people can enjoy the outdoors and, and learn about what's going on with the compressor.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisor, the Solicitor, by the Township manager?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
So I would think that, Mr. Cole, you're looking for an answer this evening as to whether you would have approval to use the facilities, correct?
Um, that would be ideal, but if the supervisors deem that they require more time, that's fine. We hope it doesn't go into next meeting because we would like to start planning for it and publicizing it if possible.
Yeah, I think this is a, I think this is a worthwhile event. I think he's answered all our questions and I have no more. And I would make a motion to allow Cliff's group to have their event.
Okay, are you second?
Yes.
I was, I just wanted to make sure that, I can't stress enough the importance of the, the Little League already having priority to the park, to the, to the field on the games. And I have, I don't, I don't personally know what the schedule is. And I don't know if anybody has told me yet whether there's a game scheduled for, for this day that he wants to have this.
I do know.
I don't have an issue with, I don't have an issue with his request, but I do have the concern of that, of the baseball, of a possibility of a baseball game being played. And then also not knowing exactly how many different organizations are coming. You know, you did say we are concerned about parking and stuff like that. But I don't have an issue with him holding an event, holding this event in the park.
And to that end, to the board, maybe Mr. Cole, if, since he's just going to start advertising this, if you grant the approval to have it, should require a response to the invitation by no, no less than a week before the event so that the police can have an idea of what they're going to be, how many people will be at the park and the township can decide if the applicant needs to engage the fire police for traffic protection or traffic control. It's, it would just be very, very nice, as Mr. Kaiser pointed out, to have an estimate of how many people will be coming.
And that will help with the porta potties too.
Yes, okay. I agree to all of, how can we put this? Can we make, can Greg make notes of everything that we're doing here? And then you and I can meet at some point and discuss all the details and you can bring it back to the supervisors or everybody else in the township. And I will engage with, with the, with the police separately if necessary. But yeah, we're happy to, to engage and do whatever the township feels is necessary for us to do this. And, and when I said advertise, I don't want you to misunderstand. I don't think we're planning on putting a lot of big advertisements out and, you know, billboards and whatnot. It's like, what I, what I mean is sending it out to our network, you know, and, you know, just making it so people do know that this event is happening.
David Collingwood here. Why, why don't we do this? Why don't we give you, grant you preliminary approval this evening and have you come back to the May meeting, since this is going to occur in June? Come back to the May meeting and we can go over this one more time. And I agree that we really have to understand what the plans are for the Little League before we go too far down this road.
Can I be given a contact to the Little League so that I can discuss this with them?
I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I think that you're, you're, that's suitable with us. Preliminary approval with us giving you an update at the May meeting seems very. Preliminary approval with um us giving you an update at the May meeting seems very reasonable to me.
Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Miller, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
I am, yes.
So let's just leave it like that and. And move on, all right?
Great, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Okay, now we'll move on to the uh committee reports. The first one would be the Planning Commission Report Chairman, Mr. Chris, first time.
All right, good evening. Uh first, I'd also like to congratulate Rod Blake, uh job well done. Hate to see you go, but uh they will see you in Florida.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Thank you. All right, uh so Planning Commission met last Tuesday. We had three applicants. Uh first was West Rock Hill Elementary School. They uh are looking to reconfigure their parking area to increase it from sixty-seven to a hundred and fifty spaces. Uh as well as add another entrance drive off of Washington Avenue. New entrance would help to improve traffic circulation, which. Right now is currently uh has its share of issues. They are not proposing any new buildings or modifications to existing structures. So they are are looking to waive land development, which Planning Commission uh. We voted and and uh we we are recommending that waiver. They have a few other waiver requests as well as some stormwater, stormwater issues that need to be resolved. Uh but again, they were, they were really talking to us about the 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 land development waiver. And again, we're we're willing to recommend that waiver. The these other other issues will have to be resolved with staff uh at some point. But uh that's was PC's involvement uh with that project from now. Uh, do we have any questions for that?
I have none.
I have none.
No.
Okay, so second applicant was North Penn Water. Um as you're well aware, they're proposing to construct a one hundred and forty foot tall. Five hundred thousand gallon water, elevated water tank uh on township building municipal property. They like to place it on an eight eighty-seven hundred square foot area between the township building, side lot and the public works building. So to get water to the to this tank, they're proposing to extend a twelve inch water main. From Ridge and County Line Roads to the tower via Ridge Road. And then continue from the tower. Uh to Lawn Avenue via Almont Road and boring under Route three oh nine. The reason for this project would be to better serve the institutional area on La- Lawn Avenue. Uh hospital, professional buildings, Penn Foundation. Basically for fire protection more than anything. And they, a benefit according to them of running this. This line from from Tyler's Port basically. Be two and three quarter mile of main along Ridge Road. You have the capability of of taking care of some some failing and compromised wells, you know, especially out in the Nashville area. That is a Telford service area. Uh but they, North Penn has had conversation with Telford and Telford would support it. I mean, Telford would still have the connections and would have to buy the water to sell um from from North Penn. There's some other details that were discussed. This this use would be a special exception use, so it would have to go to zoning hearing for approval before before anything. And another challenge is the setbacks. The setbacks for for a project like this requires one and a half times the height of the of the uh tower. To property lines and to adjacent buildings. They have the, they have the setback distance for the property lines. They do not have it to the building. So this again would be another zoning hearing uh board uh issue that would need approval. So. I mean, most members of of Planning Commission were all right with this project. North Penn was really, was really with us to to see what what they, what we thought about them putting this tower on on township property. And and they sold it pretty well. It it makes sense for it to go where they want to put it, not like any of us want to see it there, but it does make sense. Uh at least it made sense to us through their presentation, so. I guess the best way of saying is is the uh Planning Commission was comfortable with what they are proposing. You know, pending the zoning hearing board decisions. So that was it with the North Penn Water. Do you have any questions on that?
I have none.
I I just have one comment, Chris, as you know, I. My uh my main concern was the one and a half times uh fall rate or distance from the from any building. Uh and that, that I brought that up with um Mr. Preston, I think, when when he presented this to us originally.
Yeah.
It's still my concern. It's still my concern there.
All the, all the members of Planning Commission share that concern. And again, you know, we're gonna wait to hear what zoning zoning hearing had to say, but uh you know. Mr. Preston assured us the 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 safety aspect of of these, the construction of these towers, so. I I I'd hate to be the one to find out that they were substandard. And we'll wait to hear from zoning hearing. Don't you have anything else with North Penn Water? I'll move on. Our third uh applicant was uh TH Properties. They're proposing to develop the former sixteen point seven acre precision finishing parcel. With a seventy-three unit age qualified community. It's in the IS District, the uh just below the the hospital. It would have access through uh Hidden Meadows Drive, which goes back to the Hidden Meadows Apartments and the. Uh Alzheimer's unit. Which accesses off of Farmer's Lane. So. These uh the dwellings were are proposed to be all all townhouse dwellings, condo, not fee simple. There there's a handful of of right of way and setback issues that need to be worked out. Which would have to be handled through staff. There is also a waiver uh waiver request for number of homes on a cul-de-sac. They they changed their plan originally. They were, they were longer than than cul-de-sac requirements. Uh they did, they did shorten the cul-de-sac length, cul-de-sac length to six hundred and fifty feet, which is under the eight hundred maximum requirement. But they are proposing nineteen homes, nineteen dwellings uh where ordinance calls for maximum of twelve. Now, these are townhouses. They have public sewer and water, so they will have strategically placed fire hydrants. And they are also proposing a fifteen foot wide uh paved emergency access road. So. The, with the fire hydrants and the access road and and pending emergency service uh. Reviews on the on the use of that access road. Planning Commission members were were comfortable waiving that. One issue that they do have is site distance. That was reviewed and. It turns out that uh property to the south of on Lawn Avenue has some. I guess trees and shrubs that are blocking site distance. And the owners of that property have uh. They have no intention of removing any of the, any of the vegetation that is causing these these site distance issues. So that's something that's gonna have to be worked out as well. Um so to wrap it up, again, uh THP was in to to get input from the Planning Commission. You know, number one on this cul-de-sac. Then, you know, the these other waiver requests and uh. Right away issues were things that were, you know, were gonna have to be worked out with professional staff, not the Planning Commission. So we let them know that we were comfortable with the with the uh cul-de-sac, number of homes on a cul-de-sac. And and would recommend that waiver. And I guess they're gonna come back once they work out some of these other issues. So that was it for THP. Do you have any questions on that?
I have one, Chris, if I may.
Sure.
Um I I was just curious on why the, why the Planning Commission would would accept. Nineteen homes instead of the township's uh twelve that is allowable. If there is an issue with site of our site distance and and that would be, what is that, uh five or seven more more homes? That's that's at least seven to twelve, fifteen more uh trips a day onto that road.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just curious to what the thinking was there to um to go along with nineteen instead of what what is, what is allowed by the township of twelve.
Well, it it, you know, this has been a a hot button topic, um you know, that we've been discussing over the past few months. Because we had, we've had three different projects with with cul-de-sac uh waiver request. And previously, they've all been for length of cul-de-sac. The number of homes, you know, with with this emergency access, it doesn't give consideration to the site distance issue. The cul-de-sac does not, does not, is not affected by the the site distance. It's it's interior. But the number of homes, you know, when we consider, you know, the the emergency access that they're, that they're willing to provide. And the. The fact that it's public water and they will have, they will have hydrants available, fire hydrants available along the cul-de-sac. And that they are townhomes. We were, we were comfortable waiving that that number of homes on cul-de-sac.
Okay, well, I know that we've had many issues with snow removal and places to put snow. That's why I.
Right.
That's one of the reasons why I questioned it because the more homes you put in, uh the less place you have to put snow.
Yeah.
And and then it becomes a real, real issue as we all know in development. So anyway, thank you. You've 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 done a great job giving this, the updates on these uh applicants.
Yes, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
I would note that um this, this would be a private road. So the the snow removal would not be, would be, would not be placed on the township. Being that it's the an age qualified community, that their. Uh zoning requires that they are a private, private road. So the onus of of snow removal would be placed upon the HOA.
Thank you, Mr. Durstein. Any other, any comments or additional questions by any of the board supervisors?
I have none. I attended the meeting and uh good review, Chris.
Thanks.
Right, I also attended the meeting. Um with that, we get a motion to approve the uh Planning Commission report?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you. All those waivers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is approved. Uh we move on. Uh Park and Recreation Report Chairman, Mr. David Rice.
All right, how's everybody doing tonight? Park and Rec, doesn't get any better than this. Chief Blake, congratulations and many years of enjoying retirement. Thank you for your thirty plus years of service. I grew up a couple doors down from Chief Kreen, so uh phenomenal chiefs two in a row, so I like you guys. Appreciate it. Enjoy your, enjoy your retirement.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely. Um Fishing Derby's coming up this Saturday, nine AM till twelve. Gonna have the um hopefully a night, a good turnout. The weather so far looks good. It's gonna be sixty-five degrees so far. Got my fingers crossed. So that we have a good turnout. Um we're gonna have everything following all the guidelines, socially distant and all that stuff. It's gonna be um marked off by the um road crew. Everything else, boys and girls, all the way up to ages of twelve, um limited three fish per contestant. Somebody with them, obviously an adult or a guardian has to be with each one of those. This is our tenth annual. It would have been technically our eleventh, but we missed last year because we had it with COVID. But this is our tenth annual. This year, we're gonna dedicate this year's Fishing Derby to Charlie Gunst. For his many years of service to the uh Fishing Derby as well as to the community. We're gonna have a plaque mounted um Friday that is gonna be um on the the bird blind. We have a bench in place already on the opposite side of the pond um that we're gonna dedicate to Charlie. Hopefully, it's a great turnout. Like I say, um I believe it's gonna be a great day. It it always is. The kids always have a blast. When they get a hold of a trout and they just reel it in, there's nothing like it. One question, uh Greg, they, you said they change, they cleaned the porta potts on Thursday? I thought it was always Tuesday and Friday, so that's why I just want to double check.
I will, I'm pretty sure that they do it twice a week. I knew it was once towards later. It's either Thursday or Friday. I know they do it in the beginning of the week. Yes, they do it twice.
Okay.
I made sure it was cleaned before Cliff Cole's group went in to use it.
No, when when you said Thursday, that's what made me think. I'm like, oh, oh, we gotta make sure.
It's either Thursday or Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Before the weekend when it gets heavily used. After the weekend after it's heavily used.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. And then we have Moving in a Park coming up, August twenty-first. Uh movie to be determined yet. That is still in the works. That is gonna be the twenty-first. It'll be at sunset, uh seven thirty, eight o'clock uh start time. We had a good, relatively good turnout for COVID last year, spread out socially distant, had a good turnout. And then moving on to September Fest. We're gonna have some modifications. We're gonna follow the guidelines. We're gonna have to probably limit a couple things of what we do. And that we're gonna have to make sure everything's following all the CDC guidelines, Bucks County Board of Health, socially distanced. As far as bringing as many events in, probably not. We're gonna have to limit, we're gonna, we're walking through each of the events to make sure that we have. We're able to follow all the guidelines so that we can have some a September Fest this year, barring any other kind of restrictions. Moving on into um September, but fingers crossed. We move into uh September Fest and we only missed it one year. Um we have another um great year of uh September Fest activities. One of the things I got a request is upcoming events for the Park and Rec. We'd like to start hosting those back in the township building. Since they're so heavily attended. You know, with the, you know, the Park and Rec members and one or two occasional uh members. We'd like to, you know, uh host that back in the building if that's possible. We get the acceptance of that, that would be great. And last thing for uh Mr. Cole, I just wanted to tell you, I checked with Steve Nowitzki. I believe there is, should be no games unless there's a whole lot of rainouts. You should be clear, but I'll double check if. I'll let Greg know if something comes up that I, that I hear.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. That is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any uh comments or questions by the board of supervisors?
I I have one, if I may, and this is, this is directed to my two fellow supervisors. I just want to make sure that that we cover this before Saturday. We are, are both of you, as well as myself, I'm already committed to um supporting the fifty dollars. From each supervisor for the, for the largest fish caught. Three largest fish caught. Is that, is that still uh okay with with both of you fellows?
Yeah, I I believe we both all committed to that. Yes, I'm I'm good. I'm on more.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, just want, just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify to make sure because um the fish are ordered to come in Friday. And I think we'll have a really good event.
So you want.
So, thank you.
Jay, I do want to say thanks for the reminder.
Mr. Kaiser, you want nice, clean, unmarked bills then, right?
I would like, I would like fifty, Chris fifties, new ones if you have them.
All right.
Thank you, Jay, for the reminder. I appreciate it, gentlemen, for the offer.
All right, uh so I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the uh Park and Rec report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion is approved. We'll now have the.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Uh are you opening the township building for the Park and Rec meetings?
Right, yeah. Any comments from um the the board on that?
I, yes, uh Mr. Chairman, Jay Kaiser, I did commit to the Park and Rec Committee at our virtual meeting. That I support it wholeheartedly and uh I hope that you two, you two will as well.
Mike, this is Jim. There's just one statement I wanna make about this, and that is that we need to follow the guidelines for social distancing, of course. And, and I guess there's two things I wanna say about it. Hang on just a moment, please.
I thought I had just turned off, but.
There, now it's off. Sorry. The second thing is, um, Dave, you need a commitment from everybody on the parking rec that they, that they're okay with it. And as long as, as you have that, I'm okay. I don't wanna find out that one member of the park and rec is uncomfortable with it. And then, you know, they, they're unable to attend. So that, that would be my only concern.
We, we did, um, Jim, we did have a unanimous vote. It was five zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
And I'm also, um, and fine with it. So that's, uh, all three people, all three supervisors agree that you can move back into the township, uh, boardroom with, uh, certain restrictions in place.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on and, uh, Chief Rodney Blake can give his final report as police.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the police report for the Penriddh Regional Police Department for the activities for March of two thousand and twenty-one. The department responded to seven hundred and forty-seven calls for service. Of those calls, three hundred and eighteen were in East Rock Hill Township and four hundred and twenty-nine were in West Rock Hill Township. Uh, the department handled twenty-four traffic crashes, eleven crashes in East Rock Hill, thirteen in West Rock Hill, fourteen were reportable crashes and ten were non-reportable crashes. I just want the board to note, uh, that there was a fatal car crash on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one at eighteen oh one hours, six oh one PM on Route three thirteen of Three Mile Run Road. Uh, that investigation is complete. The criminal activity for the month of March, two thousand and twenty-one, there were six part one crimes and thirty-two part two crimes totaling thirty-eight crimes. In West Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows: two cases of sex offense against a minor, two theft cases, three fraud cases, one recklessly endangerment, two DUI cases, five ordinance violations, three dog law violations, two criminal mischief cases and two disorderly conduct cases. In East Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows: a motor vehicle theft, uh, theft, two fraud cases, three disorderly conduct cases, harassment, four ordinance violations, one possession of marijuana, two dog law violations and one criminal mischief. Criminal charges filed in March of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, two were charged with DUI, one for terroristic threats, three criminal mischief charges, one public drunkenness charge, two disorderly conduct charges, one township ordinance violation and one recklessly endangering another person. Officers conducted two hundred and seventeen traffic enforcement details, forty-five details on Old Bethel Pike and officers issued sixteen traffic citation, thirty-six written warnings. Officers also conducted five hundred and forty-nine business checks. I'd just like to remind the, uh, public that this Saturday, not only is it the great fishing derby of West Rock Hill, but it's also the drug takeback event from ten to two. Uh, we host two sites here in the township, one at Cranview Hospital and one here at the department. So if you have any unused meds, uh, you can drop them off then, or, you know, you can also drop them off at any time at the station, Monday through Friday, during office hours. However, if the door is unlocked, just pick up the blue phone and call an officer back and, uh, we'll dispose of your meds. So, drop your meds off and then go catch some trout. Thank you. That's my report, Mr. Conglin.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions by the board of supervisors?
I have not.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve, uh, the police report. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion is passed. We will now move on to the joint rec authority report. Mr. Jim Miller.
Good evening. Um, pool's moving along. We have about six and a half weeks until the pool opens. Um, we've got, all of our guards are hired and taking any training courses they need. Uh, they should all be completed by beginning of May. We've hired three additional staff who are, one of which will be constantly monitoring the, gate for people coming in so that we don't have to have one of our guards, um, tied up doing that. And then there'll be two others that'll be doing cleaning around the facility or tables and, and other, uh, places where people might be touching. The trees in the parking lot that were removed, uh, I wanna thank the, uh, the Rotary Club in Park City for sending someone over with a huge chipper and cleaning up the whole parking lot after those, uh, after those logs were taken out. I'm also, uh, currently working with a couple people to get estimates to take down the dead trees that are inside the fence around the pool. There's about five of them in there that have to come down. So if you know of anyone who might wanna do that task, uh, just get ahold of me. Uh, additionally, the pool's been drained. Uh, the, the gentleman's company who comes in and cleans it has notified and he said he was going to start this week. So we should be in real good shape to open the pool on Memorial Day weekend. That's about it.
Uh, I have a question. Um, do you foresee any major expenditures, any kind of maintenance issues that had cropped up over the winter that we're not sure, we didn't know about, like huge cracks or anything like that?
No, the only cracks that we had were from previous years and we were leaking a lot of water. We made all those changes over the winter, actually in the fall of last year, uh, thanks to Tony Bogner and, and some others. There was water in the pool all winter and nothing's leaking. So everything's good. We putting on our, uh, gloves and hard hats and going over and putting up the zip line, uh, sometime in the next couple of weeks, which ought to be fun. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's about the only other thing we have to do and there'll be no cost for that because we've already paid for the zip line and, uh, we'll be vol, be volunteers going in to, to put it together. So that's it. So no additional cost, David.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by any, any other board?
I have none. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, then I would look for a motion to approve the joint rec authority report.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. That is approved. We will now move on to the tax collector's report. Mrs. Clark.
Good evening, and I also wanna thank the chief for all the service that you've provided. And I just hope that the new chief knows that he has to occasionally come over and check on the tax office to make sure we're still all safe over there. So I'd appreciate if you just kinda told the new guy the way things are.
I will. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank, and it always made me feel very safe when you would come into the building. So I appreciated that.
Thanks.
Um, as far as taxes are concerned, for the month of April, I've collected annual taxes of a hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents, twenty-twenty interims of only four dollars and seventy-one cents, and our streetlight tax of one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and six cents. Um, I just wanna let everybody know that taxes are due in discount by the end of this month, April thirtieth. And I do have extra hours which are posted on my office door as well as on my tax bill for the last two weeks of discount in April. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by the board of supervisors?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. And I have a motion to approve the tax collector's report.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Tax collector's report is therefore approved. Moving on to the engineers' report, Mr. Balla.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so tonight we have, uh, first item was West Rock Hill Elementary School, uh, parking lot expansion. Briefed you on the discussions at the planning commission and their recommendation for waiver of land development. I believe we have, uh, Jeff Schick tonight from the design firm, and I'd like to give him a chance to give you a little bit more detailed overview of what the school's trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, uh, hi. Can you all hear me? Yes. Okay, thank you for your time tonight. Um, again, Jeff Schick here with KNW Engineers. The school is looking, you know, they're doing an improvement project to, uh, improve, uh, maneuvering, uh, within, you know, the site. Access improvements relative to separating, further separating bus and parent traffic, to, you know, for safety purposes. I don't know if you have a plan available, but basically they're, they're adding another entrance off of Washington Avenue, which will be dedicated for parents coming in and out of, of the, uh, the school property. So they'll be able to access and that, that entrance and the other entrance will remain for, staff and, and buses. So in the morning, a lot of that, you know, there was some conflict occurring now. That won't occur anymore because the, the, the buses and the, and the cars will be kept separate. And there won't be any crossover as well in terms of, uh, any students, you know, between cars and buses as well. So as part of that access improvement, they're also, they saw a need for additional parking. You know, we, we meet the current ordinance, but, you know, with, with daytime events or evening events at the, at the, at the school, you know, a lot of parents will show up. So they're increasing the size of the parking lot significantly. So I could, you know, answer any questions that you may have, but that's pretty much the crux of it. It's, you know, it's, it's a pretty straightforward, access type of improvement and parking expansion as well. So the, the subject of the meeting tonight was the waiver request because we actually submitted this as a stormwater management site plan. So and, and as part of that work, we, we actually needed some waivers of some of the stormwater ordinance and a few items from the SADO as well. And Steve had suggested that it would be best that we just ask for a waiver of land development and those other waivers would basically be a subset to those, you know, to the waiver of land development. So if you have any specific questions, I can certainly go over those with you.
I was gonna say, David Collingwood here. I was at the planning commission. I listened to the planning commission presentation, so I have no questions.
I, I would just wanna clarify, Jeff, the new entrance, uh, which is a little bit north on Washington Avenue from the current main entrance. I believe you represented at the planning commission that, you know, that's not in use, when it's not, uh, you know, drop off or pickup time, that that's gonna be gated off. Is that correct?
That is correct. It, it will be, yeah, it is strictly for drop off in the morning. If they have any drop offs or pickup at lunchtime and they're, they're in the current, you know, with COVID and everything, they're still adjusting some of their, their schedules and timings for that as they move forward. But the, you know, the basic thrust is yes. Steve is correct. This is for access for parents, um, in and out of the facility and then the rest of the day, those gates are gonna be closed, you know, to keep, uh, the students safe at the play areas.
Okay, and Jeff, this is Jim Miller. Um, I was also at the planning commission meeting. I thought you guys did a great job. The, the driveway, just for a little more clarification, goes into what would be considered the back of the building now, right? So that the area back there that's a play area, uh, would now become the pickup area for students?
That's correct. They actually use it now. Uh, one play area that's closest to Washington Avenue, they, they cone it off, you know, so, and basically make the, the perimeter as kind of a loop to give as many cars the availability to stack on site. So they're keeping vehicles off of, of Washington Avenue. So that's gonna continue. Except now they, they'll have an even longer distance because it'll go in loop and then it'll come down to, there's a, what will almost be an oval shaped drop off and pickup area adjacent to the school.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, this is Steve again. Just in, in summary then, so, you know, the overall waiver request is the, uh, submission of a land development plan, but the individual waiver requests are, um, landscape shading requirements in the parking lot. Uh, they couldn't fit all the trees because they don't have as many islands in the parking lot to fit the trees, but they are, uh, proposing to take those trees that they couldn't fit in the parking area and install them elsewhere on the property. So the total number of trees will still be installed. And then there was a, a few minor design issues within the stormwater basins to some peculiarities specific to the site. And I've worked through those with Mr. Schick and I'm comfortable with the, the minor waiver requests to the stormwater issues that they're asking for.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by any of the board?
I'm good.
Nope, I'm comfortable with Steve's, uh, comments.
So I guess we need a motion to approve this waiver request.
Either that or am I drawing a resolution to approve the waiver request or is it just gonna be by motion?
Take our, you and Steve.
Yeah, I, I, I think this one's easy enough and working with the school district to do it by motion, but I would, you know, reference my March twenty-sixth letter so we cover all the, all the outstanding issues.
So it would be a motion to waive land development subject to the record, compliance with the recommendations set forth in your March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one letter and further subject to, um, the applicant agreeing to pay all costs of the township?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I will second it. David Collingwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Balla. We move on.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
We'll see you.
Okay, so our second item is, uh, the road paving, suggested road paving list for two thousand and twenty-one. I believe you all have that in your packets.
Right.
The budget number was in the vicinity of four hundred, and I forget the exact number, whether it's four hundred and twelve or four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But between, uh, the road crew and, and my looking at it and, and some suggestions from the board and the manager, we narrowed it down to this list, which gets us in that, that budget area. And just as a, a quick overview, I'll say the, the road suggested for overlay paving was, uh, Township Road between Bethel Pike and Borough Line, uh, Lawn Avenue from Ridge Road to Farmer's Lane. I'm sorry, that's not, that's Ridge, that should be Ridge Road to Forest. My mistake. Uh, Quarry Road, the section from the concrete truck crossing, um, down to the Cat Hill road intersection, uh, with the bridge.
Right.
Down past the quarry, basically. And the, the large project is Lonely Road, uh, from, from Climber up to Ridge Road. So those were the four suggestions for overlay paving. Uh, the suggestions for seal code or oil and chip would be, uh, Branch Road, Catch Basin, uh, between Green Top and Wayland Road, Wayland between Catch Basin and Township Line and, uh, Cedar Hollow, uh, Finland Road to the End, relatively minor projects there. And then we are also including in the contract, uh, line painting, which would include the major roads that we're paving this year, plus, uh, roads that were done in prior years that we couldn't get painted, including Thousand Acre Road and Forest and Old State. So you see the numbers there? Um, I think they're a little bit on the high side. I think we have a little bit of room. I guess we're looking for the board's input on, on that list or any other roads that you have a concern with.
Comments or questions by the board?
Yes, if, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, Steve, I, Steve, I, I, I brought up, uh, Old Mill. I don't know. Several years in a row about, about the condition of it and, uh, I, I don't know why we're, why we're looking at Lonely Road before Old Mill. Um, it's just a question, okay? Concern of mine. Meeting House, I think, should be held off until, I think there's gonna be some activity that's gonna be taking place there shortly. Development wise, I, I was thinking that that should be maybe tabled for till next year to see if that comes through, that, 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 uh, project would probably pay for some of that work there. Just, this is just my, my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree, Jay, and we have Meeting House listed as, as a deferral. Similar to Washington Avenue, that was, that was a consideration this year, but we have the, the school project that we just talked about is gonna be, you know, put extra wear and tear on the road. Mill Road, yeah, that has been a problem spot for us. I know we're, I was trying to angle to get some. I know we're, I was trying to angle to get some grant funds for that through the dirt and gravel road program, still working on that angle. But I think in general Lonely Road has a lot heavier traffic flow than than Mill and that's that's what has was the interest this year.
Okay, it does have a lot, I know it has a lot of lot of traffic. It is correct in in saying that it's a cutoff. I mean, I mentioned that twelve years ago, that it's a major, major access when Teba was there from from the from Teba up the Ridge Road. It is, it is a major cut through. Matter of fact, the other day, Monday morning, there was a tractor trailer stuck in the in the ditch here, he was had a full trailer load of building material, he was trying to make a left on the Lonely Road off of Bridge. So I do understand that that issue of of Lonely Road. Can I ask, maybe this might be a question for for Greg, but are if we're getting any stimulus money, I had, I had thought there was probably maybe a half a million in stimulus money that might be coming to us. Old Mill might be then, if it's not on this list, looked at to to be taken care of.
Well, we're going to look into all the stimulus money and what it can be used for. And if that's a project that it can be used for, we'll certainly bring it up for consideration, but we're not sure of everything that it can be used for yet.
Okay, ten-four, thank you.
I have one comment, David Collingwood. Under oil and chip, I'm not quite sure why we want to spend any money on Branch Road from Cat Hill up to the stone portion. Part of that from the bridge up to the stone portion was just recently done. And I don't think that oil and chipping that road is going to help it at all because we're not trying, I know it's going to seal the road, but it's not that good of a road to start with, it's had some culvert work done on it, it's had some piping put under it, it's very uneven. If anything, it needs to be raised by overlay pa- paving, but I don't think this is the year that we want to do that. Because of certain projects in the community that may have an impact on that particular road. So my thoughts are that we just do nothing and and take that seventy-five hundred dollars and put it back in the kitty and use it somewhere else where it'd be more meaningful. My comment. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a suggestion. There's one thing that wasn't put on the list, the front parking lot of the James Park and in front of the James Barn needs some work on it. If the board would want to consider that as an alternate to see with this large unit cost, if we could get a better price to do a little work in the front of the park. If they could put that on as an alternate.
I I think that should go on as an alternate because we do use that parking, I see people parked in there every day. Plus, because of the, it gets, it gets used during events like fishing, I don't know about the fishing derby, but I know September Fest, it gets heavily used. So, I mean, I would be in favor of putting that on as an alternate.
I agree with that because especially the driveway coming in past the barn, going into that back overflow parking lot, there's a lot of traffic going in through there and that's we're actually losing that that roadway, it's just disintegrating.
Go ahead, Jay.
I don't have a problem with that either, because, you know, flow into the park and out of the park is is key, is very important, I believe. But I but I will say, I do want to get back to that comment there on the Branch Road, Mr. Collingwood. I I I would like to ask Steve because I I know that we oil and chip sometimes just so we don't lose the roads. I I know that the road is not in that great a shape. And I wanted to ask Steve, is, does he think that, does he think that we might be in jeopardy of losing the road if we don't oil and chip it?
Certainly a portion of it, as you get closer to the stone road, it gets, you know, significantly deteriorated. It will buy you some time.
Right. That's why I brought it up, just just for that reason.
Does the board want to consider that as an alternate bid for for Branch Road? Just to see what the prices come in.
I would be in favor of that. And that way it keeps it in limbo, but it keeps it as a possibility.
It'll keep it, keep it in our light, you know? Yeah, that's not a problem.
So, Mr. Balla, then you're looking for approval based on the discussion that we had this evening on with all the comments that were made for approval of this roadway budget with the old ordinance as we've added to the list, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other comments by the board? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So the two thousand twenty-one paving estimate budget is approved. Thank you, Mr. Balla.
All right, we will get the the specs finalized and put out, I'm not sure. We'll have to see how many weeks there are till the next meeting if we'll get the bids in for your next meeting, but that's what our our goal will be anyway.
Great.
That's all I have unless there's any other questions.
I have none.
I have none.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the engineers' report.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Passed, opposed? Okay, it's passed. We'll move on to the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report for this evening except to say we'll miss you, Chief Blake.
That's cute.
Thank you, Mary, I'll miss you too.
Thank you. We have no report to approve for the solicitors, so we'll move on to the Township Managers' Report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one thing too, is to thank the chief for his many years of service to this community. And thank you very much for the years of friendship.
Thank you, Greg, I appreciate that.
That's great. All right, so we have no managers' reports to approve. We'll move on to old business. Anyone have any old business they want to discuss?
All right, I'll just bring up one thing. If you've adjourned by the township, you've probably seen a lot of activity out back. They have started putting up our solar array. They should have had the whole racking system up, except they are in West Rock Hill Township, so. They started, instead of just using ground screws to go in, they had to do some drilling before they can get them in, but it's all included in the price, folks, no extra charge. So by by two more days, they should have the entire racking system up and we should be putting in the solar panels themselves. Thank you.
That's really appropriate, being that tomorrow is Earth Day, that's great.
Tomorrow's Earth Day, that's correct. We picked a good week.
Anyone else have any old business to discuss?
I have none, I have none.
I have none. That being said, we'll move on to item number twelve, new business. Anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss, bring up? I have none.
I have none.
I I would like to just bring up one thing regarding developments and 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 structures are being built in the township. I think, I think we need to think very hard. And I know we discussed this already, even at the planning commission level, of function, traffic moving in and out of these developments, facilities, whatever have you. To and also areas to be able to put snow. I know that, I know that a lot of times people come in with the quest to to add more units than what the township ordinances allow. And sometimes we 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 give in to 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 allow that, to accommodate the developer. I know that, you know, the, of course, everybody's trying to to maximize their space. But I think that we as representatives of the township should be thinking about the people that are going to be living there long after the developers are gone. To consider, consider making sure that we we are in within the means of of what these properties can handle, traffic wise as well as people wise. So that's all I wanted to, I just basically wanted to make a comment on it, and I know that we have discussed this before. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that being said, public comment number thirteen, if you have a comment. You have two and a half minutes, please state your name and address.
Hello, this is John Sworrock, seven fifteen Ridge Valley Road.
Yes, John.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, the township performed its periodic update of its comprehensive plan. And as part of that plan, there were a list of recommendations for the township to consider. I'd like to request the township to re-review that list of action items to see if any of them are still applicable for implementation. And if so, to take appropriate action. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent comment. Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll look for.
David, David, Denise Rogers has her hand up.
Sorry.
Denise Rogers, fifteen ninety-five Lower Rockydale Road. I just have two quick questions on the Planning Commission report. The one was, and I'll just say them both at the same time, but was there discussion on like traffic impact on the THP development backed by Hidden Meadows there? And the other was on the North Penn Water Project. Mr. Durstein mentioned that there would be an advantage to some compromised wells along that route. I didn't quite understand like what he meant there. So I just was wondering, you know, if he could explain a little bit more about that and what that would mean if those are like resident wells or what that would mean for the people that live there.
If I may, this is, this is Steve Balla. With respect to the THP question, the township did have their traffic consultant review the plan. They had some questions that THP has addressed and a few additional questions that that we're still working on, so it has been a consideration.
Okay, I just know that 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 road that comes out there, and I've visited people back there at Hidden Meadows and you know, that turn and then to Lawn, the Lawn Avenue right there, that corner. I just think sometimes if there's a lot of traffic, I don't know what that would do, anyway. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, I'm one, I can answer the North Penn Water question. Mr. Rogers, they're they're proposing to run a twelve inch water main from Ridge Road to the township building where they're proposing to put the tower. And they are suggesting that, you know, homes with with failing wells or compromised wells along that route might be able to tie in and get public water and abandon their their onsite wells. They also suggested that homes with failing septic systems could benefit because the failing septic systems could be contaminating their onsite wells. So that's not going to help their septic system, but they could get, they could get good public water as opposed to possibly contaminated water from their own septic systems.
Right, and would would that be like offered as an option or would that be something that eventually they would require?
That I don't know, it's very preliminary. But it's something that they suggested as a benefit to to having this rundown ridrew.
Okay. And is there a way that the residents that live along that would know about this on, if they don't attend board of supervisor or planning commission meetings?
I would, I would hope that it would be made public knowledge that it's something that would be available.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comments? With that, we'll look for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned, thank you, people, thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.